Good evening and welcome to the City of Franklin Council meeting Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. And we're going to call to order if you will, Kelly, if you would make a motion to call. No, sorry, we're going to let, we're going to let Paul.
Before the meeting.
Before the meeting.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah, we have one order in business and as you know, Andy Federman, after several years of dedicated, sincerely dedicated service to the Fourth Ward, because of transition in housing, residents had to design, he did that in June, council proceeded to accept applications, got four outstanding candidates, and that's also true, four outstanding candidates. And after the interview process at the last meeting, Mark Webb was selected to fill that seat. I will tell you that we wanted to make sure Mark was in place in case any emergencies occurred before tonight, and so we did an informal swearing in last week, but today if you come forward, Mark, you swear in. All right, you got anybody here with you?
Where do I begin? There's sisters-in-laws, there's friends, there's family, there's most of the first three rows from this side over.
You know, awesome. Sure they are, sure they are. So I wanted to welcome them and recognize you as well and thank you for your support, Mark. So, all right, at this time, I'll ask you to raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Mark Webb.
I, Mark Webb.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
Do solemnly and sincerely promise.
And swear or affirm.
And swear or affirm.
That I will conform to.
That I will conform to.
And uphold.
And uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of both the United States of America.
Of both the United States of America.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And will support the Charter.
And will support the Charter.
And all ordinances and resolutions.
And all ordinances and resolutions.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
I will be loyal.
I will be loyal.
And with strict adherence.
And with strict adherence.
Obey the duties of my office.
Obey the duties of my office.
Set forth by law.
Set forth by law.
And the will of the citizens.
And the will of the citizens.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Of the city of New Franklin, Ohio.
Congratulations.
And now we'd like to introduce Holly, who's going to speak to us on, what are you going to speak on, Holly?
Programs that our department does, podium, we're going.
Podium, please.
Okay.
Then you get everybody's attention.
Holly is one of the stars of Somme County Government that does so much and is involved in so many very, very important projects throughout the county, and she's here with the Somme County Economic Development Office, correct?
That's correct. I don't have as many friends as Mr. Webb has. But okay, Miss Judy, but congratulations on your, on your new role, so I'm sure New Franklin is very lucky to have you. So my name is Holly Miller, and I am with the Department of Community and Economic Development under our county executive, Emily Shapiro. Prior to COVID, I would come out once a year, do a 31 community road show, go to all 30 different communities, and let you and your residents know what programs we have available to assist residents out of our department. COVID hits, you are my first official show since COVID, so thank you, thank you for accommodating to my office. So what I gave you this evening are some programs that are administered out of our department that are funded through either the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or from the Department of Energy, or from the state EPA. So I just want to spend just a few minutes, go over the programs, because you guys know your constituents better than we do. You know what your residents need, and if your residents call you, we're hoping that you're able to refer them back to us to get the services that they need. You are our voice in your community. So the first flyer that you have is a program that's been around for a while, is the lead-based paint hazard reduction program that we have. And if the clerk or somebody is able to put these on your website, that would be fantastic. We can get you other copies for your lobby if you would like that as well. But we partner with the Health Department to administer our lead-based paint abatement program. This program is anyone in Somme County that meets the income requirements and lives in a home built before 1978, and has children that live in the home either under the age of six, either full-time or visits at least 62 hours a year, they qualify for this program. This program will go in and abate all of the lead that is in the home. So typically, your lead is found in your windows, through your doors, your siding, your front porches, your soffits. This program goes in, removes that, does new windows, doors, siding, soffits at some points in time carpet. It just depends on where there is lead. This program is available to homeowners and to renters. So if you are landlord and you're renting to low-income residents, we always income-qualify the tenant. So you may qualify based on your tenant's income, age of the home, as long as your tenant has children in the home or visiting. And this is also something you want to think about if you have senior citizens in your home that may be raising your grandchildren, or the grandchildren get on and off the bus there, or maybe stay the summer months at grandma's house, and grandma is low-income, and those children are under the age of six, they may qualify for this program. But we have this program for another year and a half, and we still have a lot of money flung to this program, so we are very much promoting the lead program.
This one's real quick, it says a minimum of six hours a week?
It's 62 hours a year, if you, it's, because sometimes they're not there in the winter months, but they're there all summer, so we balance it out to 62. The other program is our homeownership assistance program. We get funding from the Department of Energy to go into homes all throughout the county. Again, it is rental or owner-occupied roads and home-qualified tenant. The purpose of this program is to reduce the energy burden for those that are at or below the poverty level. So if you look at two different incomes, between the income for lead and the income for HWA, it's different because HWA is the poverty level. So this program, we go in, we do an energy audit, and we identify what could be done in the home, which typically a new furnace, hot water tank, insulation, air sealing. We also meter the refrigerators and freezers, and if they fail a metering test, it's new refrigerator and freezer, and then we put new light bulbs in if they have incandescent bulbs and not the LED bulb. This program again is county-wide, it is a grant to them, there is no lien place on the home, they are eligible for this program once every 15 years. So if somebody's already received service, they have to wait 15 more years before they can receive service again. Any questions on HWA? We have a little over $7 million in HWA to spend, so please send those residents forward on HWA. The other flyer is not actually my program, it's not out of our department, but it is something that our emergency management department wants to make sure we get out and that the residents know about. The EMA, the Public Safety, now has an app that you can download, and you get push-down information from emergency management if something's going on in the county, storm warnings, it's kind of like reverse 911, but it's done by our emergency management. So there's an app or a QR code here to do this. Another program that we have, so the last two pages, or just kind of recap the programs that I talked about, but I want to hit on our minor home repair program. So we get funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development through community development block grant funds to assist low-to-moderate income homeowners that need repairs to their home that allows them to stay in that home. That could be AEA repairs, maybe a wheelchair ramp, a new roof, new windows, electrical upgrade, anything that has helped in safety. We have a program that allows us to go in, we get all the bids, we do the work, and we secure the work, the work that's done with a five-year deferred forgivable loan. So if somebody here qualifies for, we put a new roof on their home, say it's $10,000, we secure that with a five-year deferred forgivable loan, forgives itself in equal portions over five years, so that by the end of the fifth year, as long as they've not sold or transferred that property, it is completely forgiven. The purpose of the loan is to prevent houseslippers, is to prevent someone from buying a home, moving in the loan, and conversing, and then turning around and floating in. We understand things happen, they can always come to talk to my office, but we secure that with the loan. We are always looking for applications, we are a one-touch, one-application department. So if somebody applies for HWA, and my inspector goes out and sees that they need a new roof, and they happen to live here in New Franklin, we're going to use our minor home repair funds to put that new roof on, then we'll come back in and we'll do whatever the HWA inspection calls for, furnace, hot water tank, insulation. Another program that we have is our household sewage treatment system program. So we get money from the EPA to replace gallon septic systems. You have to have a citation from the Health Department, and you have to income-qualify. We replace a lot of septic systems, but we're going to get southern and southern. The Health Department issues a citation, in that citation is actually my name and phone number. So you'll call our office, as long as you income-qualify, again, it's secured with a five-year deferred forgivable loan to prevent houseslipping. If you sell your house, whatever's not being forgiven is to back at that point in time. All of our programs are designed for low-to-moderate income individuals, except for HWA, that's the poverty level. However, with COVID, you've noticed, a lot of people, their income has decreased, so people that you think maybe not, wouldn't have qualified before, might qualify now. We always look at the most recent tax returns, so even though I'm in August of '23, I'm looking at what their income was in '22, that's how we income-qualify them. The county is responsible for getting all the bidders, we enter into the contract with all the contractors, the homeowners don't have to worry about any of that, and we pay the contractors when they are done, and then we transfer all of the warrants information to the homeowners. And the other program that we have specifically for New Franklin, because you're outside of ActuBar, which is a private policy, is our community development block grant program. So you, as in Franklin, can apply for community development block grant dollars. You've gotten funds in the past, what is, does your walking trail have a name over there?
I'm sorry?
The walking trail, it's like right here.
It doesn't have a name.
It's Bob's. It's Bob's, okay. So CDG, assisted in paying for that walking trail. So as long as you're doing a project in a low-to-moderate income area, or specifically for senior citizens, for special needs adults, that is, water, sewer, any type of utility, while we can't necessarily pay to run the utility down the street because it might not be a low-mod area, I can pay to connect low-mod individuals to that utility. So as you plan for the future, keep that in mind, again, that is specifically New Franklin would apply for the community development block grant dollars. I've had some discussions with Mayor Addison before about projects that might qualify. But I'll also tell you upfront, you don't, you don't qualify for something. So have a conversation with me, we'll tell you yes, apply, or no, don't, or wouldn't. Last thing I want to hit on is, I'm sure you are aware, Somme County is building a middle-mile fiber network to connect all 30 new communities at a public safety point. There's been meetings in the past with our consultants and all the communities, we finally got all of the plan sheets to connect all communities from our consultants and our engineers. Early statement from Baron and I, you'll be coming out to meet with your community one more time to show you the final plan, where you're going to connect your public safety network to on that middle mile, and talk about what projects you have coming in the next three to five years. Because our goals are, as you do road projects and open up roads and sidewalks, is to cut blank conduit open conduit in those sidewalks so that we can maybe move our route a little bit, or we can make sure to get more fiber through there to serve your residents as we continue to talk to the internet service providers to provide internet once the middle mile is up. So that conversation, Mayor, will be coming in the next weeks. So with that, I know it's a lot of information, you guys have my, my phone number, my name, my email. I will say, you don't have any safety services in here this evening, right? I'm not seeing any, sir, fire anywhere here. Guys, we get into the winter months, our HWA program does help with no heats, we're not an emergency program, however, if your fire department or your police department for some reason has to red-tag your furnace, have them reach out to me directly, that is my cellphone number that is on that card, my personal cellphone, please make sure that they have that, because we will make sure that if they are low-income or elderly, my team will be out there and getting them an application for service to replace that furnace, as long as it comes from core safety forces. Any questions for me?
I have a question, that the, you've got the income qualifications on the HWA and the lead program. The sewage treatment program is the same.
Is the same as lead?
Same as the lead.
And so is the minor over here.
So everything is the same as lead except for the HWA.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's $48,650 income for a single person.
Yes.
And would that be, when you say it's based off of their tax income?
Gross.
Their adjusted gross?
They're gross.
Adjusted gross. All right. Great. And we'll get this info all on our website and Facebook page, also, Holly.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, again, thank you for allowing me to come out.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for letting go first.
Thank you. Now, great, continuing with the committee meeting, and we have six new resolutions, resolutions, no second, oh, eight, I'm sorry, you have two more, thank you, yes. We have eight new resolutions, no second readings, no third readings, not pending registrations. Our first reading is resolution number 23R62, Mr. Powell.
Thank you. This is assigned to the Finance Committee, a resolution, we'll open a Finance Committee at 6:18 with all members present, a resolution authorizing new additional appropriations to 2023 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring an emergency. And this is additional appropriations are necessary for the Better Road Bridge Fund and due to additional pass-through payments for fiscal year 2023, and also for street construction maintenance and repair fund because of a grant award and purchase to go along with that. So $20,176 better road and $59,500 to the street construction maintenance and repair fund. Questions, comments?
These, these are not New Franklin dollars either, all pass-through dollars, right?
No, the, and the resolution will be further down the road today. The Better Road is pass-through, but the street construction maintenance repair fund, we received a grant to purchase equipment, again, we'll see that resolution down the road, and this is to help pay for that and all that concept, correct?
Yes, because we have to pay that out at first, and then we get reimbursed for that grant, $40,000 in front.
That's what I guess I meant, is in the big picture, after all is said and done, this is all pass-through.
No, because there's a difference between actual pass-through, like, when, when we talk about, when Judy talks about pass-through, that means that no actual money is exchanged, it's been, it's like, for example, on Better Road Bridge, ODOT is making that payment, but we have to show it on our books, we have to show it as coming in and going out, even though the money never came in and never went out of our book, out of our bank accounts. So that's what we mean by pass-through. Where with the, where with the other one, it's grant money, basically, Brian has to pay for the whole amount upfront, out of our, his appropriations, that's why we added to it, and then, then the grant will reimburse a portion of that, which in this case is $40,000.
So we're extra paying $19,500.
Right. Other questions, concerns, comfortable waving three?
All right.
Then we'll move on to resolution 23R63, a resolution authorizing transfer funds from the General Fund to the Police District Fund and declaring an emergency, and this is to start standard transfer from General Fund to Police District Fund, an amount of $200,000. Wave the three on this?
I, I just have a quick question, we just, we just did this last meeting.
Well, we, if you recall, when we did the budget meetings, we had set aside $1,450,000 to that, from the General Fund that would eventually go to the police department because obviously they don't have so much, enough money. So we do this usually monthly or every other month, depending on their balance, so that supplements their balance rather than trying to dump all that money at once, because a lot of times we can't, some years we can't.
So it's not unusual, it's just tiny?
Yeah, it's just tiny.
And Mark, for you, I won't sing you out, but I just did. I mean, and for general purposes, informational purposes, our fire department, for instance, has levies that are sufficient to fund all of their needs. The police department does not, and, and we, in fact, gave up one police levy to, in conjunction with the increase in income tax, and it's been really committed decision down the road to not go back for more levy money. And so we know that we don't have enough funding for that police levy to run the police department, and so we always are in a position to transferring money from the General Fund into the police fund. We do it incrementally for a variety of reasons, you know, some of which Susan's have addressed, some of it has to do with when our revenue flow comes into the city as well. So that's why you're going to see those transfers from the General Fund, it's not that the police department is out of money.
Is it usually a similar amount to what we're looking at on this one, too?
Yeah, it usually is, except maybe the last one might not be an even amount because it's got to make that $1,450, so.
And that was just like Mayor said, from when we asked for that, the voters go out and vote for the extra 1%, we basically told them that part of that money was to, to support the police department.
Exactly. Other questions, concerns?
Can I just say, too, since we do have a new number, and it's the same, you all know this as well, anytime you have a question, and you, or you think of something later, if you want to give me a call, or send me an email, or you can come in and see me, I'm, I welcome that anytime, because the more you know, the easier my job is.
Okay, anybody else? Wave a three? All right. And then moving on to our supplemental agenda, resolution 23R69, a resolution authorizing additional payments to cornerstone crushing LLC and Zeder Trucking for the Tudor House Sewal Project and declaring an emergency. And this is, we had previously approved pain for the project, certain amount, and cost came in a little bit higher, we needed more stone, and then so we had five more stone, and we had to get that stone to the Tudor House. So we had to purchase $1,946.53 worth of stone, and then it cost us $1,906.80 to get that stone to the Tudor House. So that's what this is. Questions? Comments?
Saturday, they had the fire days over at the State Park, and there was a constant flow of people in and out using that trail, which is nice to see. So I think it's been a huge improvement over there.
Yeah, the Sewal looks fantastic, and then the trail from the park to the Tudor Houses.
Actually, guys, the whole thing does.
It does. The Sewal trail has come out very nicely.
Because we had resolutions with a set amount, we didn't pick up on the contingency soon enough, so if we had included a contingency, we wouldn't have needed to come back. Since we had a prior resolution that authorized a specific amount, since we're over that amount, that's why we have to come back to you with a resolution. And then it's always fun to recall that all of these funds are going to be reimbursed through that capital grant, so these funds as well. So that was a $300,000 grant that we received from the state of Ohio for that Sewal project, which we're still working to finish up.
Questions, comments? Wave three? Fantastic. Anything else for Finance Committee, anyone? Perfect, we will close the Finance Committee at 6:25.
Perfect. Our next resolution is resolution number 23R64, Mr. Powell.
All right, thank you, Judy. We'll open Streets and Dreams Committee, we'll call it 6:25, we have a couple items on the agenda this evening. Our first one is agenda 23R64, a resolution accepting the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Safety Intervention Grant, approving the purchase of a Vermac Portable Traffic Signal System Set and declaring an emergency. And then I want to go ahead and read the other one, because they tie together here, straight off, straight off. The other one is, a resolution is 23-R66, a resolution authorizing the city of New Franklin's participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency. So this, excuse me, this Vermac Portable Traffic Signal is at a cost of $59,500. The grant from the Bureau of Workers' Compensation Safety Intervention Grant Program is $40,000. So that's a really nice grant, and getting that grant was through the cooperative with ODOT. So if I'm explaining that correctly.
That is correct.
Okay, so that's a, that's a beautiful thing, to get a piece of equipment and a $59,000 piece of equipment for basically $19,500. Any questions or anything you need to add?
Is this the first machine of this type that we have?
Yeah. We've borrowed them before, I believe, but this is the, is this going to be the first one we've owned?
Yeah, yeah. This is, this equipment is where you've seen before in construction sites, road construction sites, traffic signals, so to control the flow of traffic around the construction area, this helps take away having to flag or stand there, we could use this equipment to, you know, regulate traffic while we're working on the streets, so that's why workers compensate, oh yeah, please do that, we don't want you to get hit by cars.
The first tip of the hat goes to Mr. Powell, who tipped us off to the, this grant program. The second one goes to our Deputy Service Director, Brian Kepler, who's in the back over there, and he did the whole application process for this grant, and $40,000 comes into the community, which is a really big deal. And then we throw a third tip over here to Susan, because, you know, when, when we saw what we had, and this is a $59,000 purchase, and normally that would require a bid, and oftentimes, we're dealing with state bid items, but this is a little different animal, that, under the ODOT Cooperative Program, which requires, that's what the second resolution is about, requires us to, to join that, and I'm probably sure that he said, you know, all right, anyway. And so we, we will, and that, and you know, if you approve that subsequent resolution, that's renewable every two years. So apparently, it just hadn't hit our radar before, we just haven't need to, to purchase from that program, and the vendor here for this unit is one of the approved vendors under that ODOT, ProVane, or?
One of the nice things about these, I believe these probably the same, you can set up four units around the four-way intersection as well, is, is perhaps, it gives some people out of traffic, out of the line of traffic, it actually lets some do the work, which gives Ryan essentially two more guys. It's great, great equipment.
It really is, because we have small crew, and two men really, at the line.
Thanks for, everybody involved. And if I have anything else on that, we'd be asking you to wave, the three, two, three is on both days. Anything else for Streets and Dreams Committee? I think that's all I got, I'm over, close committee, 6:29.
Thanks, David. Next resolution is resolution number 2023R65, and that is Mr. Powell.
All right. We'll open the Public Utilities Committee at 6:25?
He said a little like five, he said like this.
I'm looking at the wrong part of the glass.
I had those moments.
So this is a resolution authorizing, and that needs to do Franklin's agreement with Insight Advisory Group LLC serving as planning consultants for New Franklin and declaring an emergency. So this, we had some dialogue back and forth, through some emails on this, this is with the company, and we utilized their services in May to work, to get us some financing for some equipment, to use the state budget.
Yeah, that, we've used Insight for a number of years. Insight, as you know, had a change in, in their personnel, and Sean Joyce is the lead on that one, and Sean has been, he's strong, he was, he was director of Stan Hewitt for years, and they're all about Grant Lake, and so he had a lot of good connections through there, and they're also about lobbying, he introduced us to Brian Durrell with Credo, and we have never used a lobbyist here in New Franklin, but we took an initial step, we talked to you guys, we talked about this back in May at our meeting, engaged them for just a two-month period at $5,000 a month, which is their standard fee, because we got wind that the, the capital budget was being, the two-year operating budget was being considered in Columbus, and it, it appeared there were going to be opportunities for appropriations from that budget, and we were invited to, to make a request, and we did to the tune of $1.5 million for the Service Department, which would have included the salt truck that we're going to need in the future, we didn't have it in this year's budget, we don't have to have it this year. So we were optimistic that we had a shot at that, given previous discussions. Things went a little well, the budget, you would Things went a little well, the, the budget, you would have bothered to pay attention to it, but it was madness down there in Columbus, uh, the, the governor introduced his, uh, the House had theirs, the Senate had theirs, finally they had the powwow, they got it in at the very last minute, and only a very few appropriations were approved, uh, not coincidentally, uh, in, in districts where, uh, some of the representatives left, which is a good thing, God bless them. Uh, but in any event, uh, so, we didn't get it then, but they created, I think it's a seven min, seven hundred million dollar, uh, um, kinda catch-all in the budget, that, uh, for further application and further efforts to pursue the, the appropriations that we were trying to get the first time around. Um, so, we, but I, I did not feel that we were in a situation where we wanted to dedicate five hundred, uh, five thousand dollars a month, uh, for lobbying in this situation. We have another, you know, while all that was happening now, you know, the, the State of New Franklin Three Silver Project is going on, and I'll talk about that in my report, but that's gonna take some, uh, we're gonna need some help in Columbus on that one as well, and we have reason to think that we'll get that help. Uh, and, and, uh, these folks, Credo, um, among their personnel is, uh, an individual who was instrumental in us getting the three million dollar grant from Representative Gonzalez of Federal Appropriation, uh, a year ago, so he's part of their team. So they got a really good team, uh, and, uh, we, uh, so I said, well, we just can't, we can't do twenty-five hundred a month for economic development, five thousand for this, if you guys could somehow partner together and come up with five thousand a month, we would do that for the, you know, I'd recommend that we do that for the end of the year, the last five months, and see how we do, and see where we are. Uh, and, um, they had that relationship, and they put that together, and that's what that agreement talks about, they'll, they'll be a subcontractor for Insight, the invoices will be the Insight, uh, and, uh, they've been, they've been at the table with us, uh, so, uh, but it, it, it's intentional that we set that up for the final five months, and they know that as well, and we're just gonna see where we are at that point in time, and see if it makes sense, and they'll see if it makes sense, and bottom line, we're gonna see if we get some money. Uh, you know, that's, it's just that simple, and, and they know that as well. So, uh, that's why we're, I'm recommending that we take a shot at this, I know Mr. Damon sat in opportunity to meet with, with the gentleman, and they're connected with, uh, with the people in Columbus, and there's nothing untoward about this, it's actually very above board, they actually have a register, uh, in Columbus as lobbyists for the, for the City of New Franklin, which they've done, uh, and so they know who, who's being represented, so, that's what this one's about.
I don't have any other questions, anyone have questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a little comment, uh, to the mayor's point, uh, we were at an event, and, uh, the Speaker of the House, Jason Stevenson, was there, and the mayor, uh, got him like an attack dog, and he was all over, uh, representing our, our, our little town here, and, uh, I assure you, Mr. Stevenson knows who we are. Thanks, Mayor Adams, and, uh, good work.
Thank you.
It was important for there too.
You know, I really have to say your part, all that's done so much, I appreciate it all.
No, I understand that, that's not, I mean, you know that.
And, and I think this is, uh, very important for us to do, uh, we need that voice in Columbus, and, uh, as much as the mayor has done for the city, and, you know, been out there and getting, uh, anything that he can find for us, uh, he can't be in Columbus all the time, he can't always be there and, and talk to people necessary, so, um, so it's important for us to have these, uh, professionals that know what to do, where to go, who to talk to. Uh, and this is not something new for the city, I mean, having a lobbyist is, is something new for the city, but we hire consultants all the time for, uh, different things that we're not professionals at. Uh, we've just, this year, we hired, we contracted with four engineering firms to handle different engineering projects. Uh, we have our zoning code being looked at, and we hired a consultant to do that, and Fred's doing a great job with it, I had a meeting Thursday night, uh, listening to what's going on, and they're, they're really moving along nicely, we're very happy to see what they're doing. Uh, the comprehensive plan, we hired consultants for that, uh, and we even hired a consultant to mail out and, and tabulate responses, uh, for the comprehensive plan. Um, our ordinances, combining our ordinances and getting that in line, we hired a consultant. Um, our new website, we hired somebody else to do that. So, I mean, this is something that we normally do, is just look at that. We have pavement management consultant, we can drive down a road, and we can tell that road really sticks, or that it's okay, but the consultant can look at it in a different way, and see if it needs to be fixed now, or if it has two years left on it, uh, and that's, that, again, that's not a skill level that we can have. Uh, we have an attorney, you know, as mayor, but we still have a law director and his team to help advise the city. Uh, we have a labor attorney and his team to help us with contracts and stuff. Ms. Cook does a great job handling the day-to-day business of finance for the city, makes sure that everything is checked properly, uh, we get clean audits, she does a great job with audits, uh, and makes sure everything's done the proper way it's supposed to be done. But we don't have a finance professional helping the city. We've talked about it for years, we don't have, out of all these other contractors or, or consultants, we don't have somebody consult, to consult with about how to handle our finances, how to handle our money, what makes good sense for our city, that's something that we're lacking, we have a, a, a nice healthy budget, yearly budget that we're working with, and we don't have a professional person to help us with that money. I think it's, it's past time that we look into getting that help for our city, and make sure that we are spending and using our money the best way possible for the citizens of our city.
Jim, I think you're right, I think that's a good idea, 'cause we do hire a professional there, this is just a add-on step.
One quick question, so Insight and Credo are two separate companies, I take it they've worked together in the past on similar projects, so they've got a pretty good partnership?
Yes, yes, that's how the relation came to us.
Is there any way of raising the rules on this one? Twenty-three sixty-five? All right. Next one is twenty-three R sixty-seven, this is a resolution authorizing mayor prepare to met application for the City of New Franklin to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission Emergency Fund Program, and execute contracts as required, and declare an emergency.
Yeah, well, this is, um, another good day for New Franklin, I mean, you just heard about forty thousand that came in on the BWC grant, and this is a two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred dollar grant, uh, that, uh, we were able to obtain from the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWCC. Uh, this happened relatively quickly, um, we have, uh, in Melody Village, and we've known of this, there's four culverts that, um, are gonna need to be replaced, and, and, uh, Brian has pointed those out to us, he, that's been on our radar for a year, year and a half, uh, and we're monitoring that, trying to work our way into, uh, you know, being able to replace these, um, uh, we took the step of getting a cost estimate for what it would cost for these four, uh, and the total was over a million dollars. So, okay, we're gonna have to scramble some money together, hadn't hit your radar yet because it wasn't urgent from our end, we knew this was something that was coming. Uh, the overture weigh came a little quicker than the other three, uh, and ODOT, uh, they do their inspections on these, and they had done an inspection, and they indicated that, uh, I think initially they were talking about a load limit reduction, uh, and at that point, we knew we were gonna have to step it up and, and, uh, we got a cost estimate of what it would cost to, uh, replace that culvert, and that cost estimate is the two hundred sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to, uh, just for the overture weigh, culvert. Um, so we knew what that number was, and literally, I mean, within the last three weeks, uh, and then, floating across the screen, one day, um, I noticed that, um, OPWCC had some emergency funds, uh, and, uh, which is not unusual, uh, they have their projects, and they have the funds, and some projects don't go forward, and at the end of the, you know, they have a, they have a, a window left, they've got some funding left. Um, we didn't know whether this qualified it as emergency or not, but we talked to our, uh, engineers, Josh Slaga, why not, let's make a run at it, uh, he put a nice application together, uh, they got back to us, and they asked for a little bit more information, we sent that information, um, we were told then that it was, uh, going to the desk of the Director of OPWCC, um, and I called our lobbyist, uh, but, uh, but before they had a chance to do anything, she approved it. Uh, and, uh, so, we are gonna receive two hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred dollars towards that culvert. Um, we have to, uh, we'd have to make a formal application for that, uh, the funds are there. So this is the next process, and that's the communication that came from them, congratulations, submit the application, um, OHM advisors, uh, through Josh Slaga, they'll, they'll submit the application, it'll be approved and moved forward, there's gonna be design, uh, that is still gonna have to take place, and so there'll be some cost estimate of that. Um, this is a ninety-ten grant, and there's a possibility that, uh, we may be able to do ninety-ten on the design as well, so we don't know what that number's gonna be yet, it's usually, usually not more than ten percent, if you say. Yeah, somewhere around there. So that, that amount's gonna come as well, but, uh, we'd like to get this, uh, approved so we can make that application, uh, and we'll move and we'll get overture done, and then we'll chase money for the other three.
Any, any comments on this, I mean, the one comment I had is, I mean, is Mr. Powell mentioned, we've got four engineering firms that we hired, and this is a direct result of the fruits of those, you get an engineering firm that specializes in a specific discipline, and, and this just shows how pays off. Everybody comfortable waving a three to us? I will close the Utilities Committee at six forty-four.
Our next resolution is twenty-three R sixty-eight.
Last but not least, we'll open, uh, thank you, we'll open Community Development at six forty-four. Um, this one is new, this is on the supplemental, uh, this is a resolution authorizing a collaboration of policing services between the City of New Franklin and Springfield Township, and hiring this emergency. Uh, we just got this, I just saw it actually on my way here, um, a little, little apprehensive here, what we got going on.
Yeah, what, it, it, it sounds more complicated, complex than it is in a sense, um, it, uh, Springfield Township has reached out to us, uh, to see if they could utilize some of our police force for, uh, special events, traffic control, extra job assignments, other similar duties. We do this in, in most of the other communities, we have not done it in Springfield Township, we do it in Norton, we do it in Bardman, um, what it's gonna be, what it's gonna consist of, at least initially, is extra job assignments, uh, and they have need there for staffing in some of those areas, uh, but also then for traffic, and apparently we do quite a bit of that with, with Norton for their traffic. So, it just authorizes, uh, it, it's an agreement and an understanding of, you know, what are the parameters of that, you know, the, uh, as it indicates, they'll collaborate in development and operational plans and strategies, uh, and, uh, what it will boil down to is, if they have need, they'll communicate to us, we need some guys, and if we have guys that are available to do this off-duty, it will not diminish our forces, it's not taking our guys away from any of the shifts, it's if they have the extra time, and they wanna take the extra job, uh, they can do that, but we have an agreement with them that, 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 uh, I guess confirms that, provides the outline for that. You got it late, uh, we had, the MOU was prepared, and, um, the, uh, and it went through our law director, and it came back to me, uh, uh, like the day before the last meeting, and so I, I'm not gonna try to add that on, so I stuck it in the file for this week, and, uh, Monday when the adjutant came out, the chief said, hey, where's our, the one with the MOU? And I said, well, it's in my file, but I didn't get it out. Uh, if, if you wanna take more time on it, you certainly can, um, it's, it's not urgent from our end, um, but, uh, that's, that's the gist of it.
A couple questions I have right off the top, you know, these officers be using city vehicles? Using our vehicles to go in the, is crazy, or is it?
Yeah, that's a good question, let's find out. They, you know, normally do?
Yeah. And then another question is, could this create overtime for our dime, if the officer is up against his forty hours or overtime work for them, uh, and then they work ten hours over there, could we end up with overtime for our?
It would not, yeah, it'd, it'd be separate pay, just the extra job pay.
So would the officers be paid by Springfield, or would be paid by New Franklin?
They'd be paid by Springfield directly, yeah.
And then, uh, to touch on Mr. Daniels's comment, what, what kind of charges are we, you know, basically relaying to Springfield for vehicles and stuff like that, because there's a cost to the residents for fuel, and then you get to wear and carry other vehicles? And then one last, not the last, but another comment is, if we go back, I think it's maybe in the spring or last year, we kinda got out of doing this for the upper deck, because it puts our officers in harm's way, can potentially ruin somebody's career with one incident, not even working for New Franklin, how is this different from that? And will we see these people, say if Springfield needs an officer for Walmart, or I can see a New Franklin officer at Walmart early, working security there?
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll have to check with the chief, he, he has, uh, he approves the extra, uh, extra job duties, so they don't just arbitrarily, they can't sign up without his approval, so the, the initial screening goes through the chief, as to whether or not he's gonna accept or, or allow anybody, or post it, I guess, and accept it, but, um, but why don't we have some come and talk to us about it?
That's what I would say.
Sure.
And somebody ask chief, if it's a compliment.
Absolutely. Yeah, those are good questions, I don't know about the vehicles, but we'll find out.
None of us have any exact words, it definitely is, so.
All right, let's go to the second.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions, Tom? And by the way, this is, these are committee meetings, I don't, kinda at the end, if the public has any, this is a little bit of a casual part of the meetings, so you're welcome if I can, if you have a comment or a concern. Any else? All right, we'll close, uh, Community Development at six forty-nine.
And we'll open the City of New Franklin's regular scheduled council meeting at six fifty-nine, on Wednesday, August second, two thousand and three, if everyone will stay to the church.
At legations, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cox, Mr. Hargit, Mrs. Jones, Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Webb?
Present.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make the motion, give it through the minutes.
Sir.
Thank you. Wait for a second, so that we can do your own calls. Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Mr. Daniels.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passed. Public comment, can we have anything to add to your part, thank you. I can defend one you always.
Okay, well, I'm always ready for this meeting, I'm just a surprise. I'm not used to seeing this many people at the meetings, you're a little.
Isn't that nice?
A handful. I have some comments, some comments I'd like to read. Um, I'll start by saying, I wasn't bothered by not being selected for the interim council seat, I understand your decisions, and I agree with them wholeheartedly, um, I wish Mr. Webb great success in his position. Uh, had I been selected, however, I would have had declined the mission, position prior to this meeting, in addition to my mother, who lives in Florida and refuses to move back here, falling and breaking her head, uh, and I have to make, uh, some rushed arrangements to try to get her to a different facility, so that doesn't happen again. Uh, since the last meeting, or just prior to the last meeting after my interview, uh, another loved one has been diagnosed with a very aggressive terminal disease, uh, and she's receiving treatments that are never, prolonged life, prolonged life by a few years. Uh, in the sleepless nights that have followed this news, and reflecting on the fleeting nature of human existence, I've reached a decision. Uh, as of this morning, I withdraw my name from the ballot, and Mr. Wolf, uh, that means you will be the next ward for councilman, because you'll be running out of votes. And Mr. Wolf, that means you will be the next ward for councilman because you'll be running out of votes. I hope that you'll vigorously represent the people of our ward, as I would have done had I been able to, and that knowing this now will save you the time and money of having to campaign.
Thank you. Sorry to hear about that.
Yeah, I'm also going to be formally resigned from the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee for that above reason, for others' own. Say I have to speak to you in a minute. I'm grateful for having had the opportunity and the support from council to have served my fellow residents in facilitating getting the survey done, gathering their views and visions for the future of New Franklin. And this is why I have to say, however, from what I've seen thus far, some things that have happened in meetings and minutes and so forth, I have a concern that the final document might be driven more by what the city desires than by the will of the residents. That's my personal concern. Some of it driven by the chairman of the committee, who is not here again tonight, telling me personally on more than one occasion that at the end of the day, the survey is only a very small part of the planning process. Well, the residents are the owner of this city. I'm going to say that again. The residents are the owners of this city and not the other way around. The plan should be based primarily on the people's views and vision for what the city does in the future. I personally have no longer had the time, energy nor inclination to continue being engaged as I have this, as engaged as I have been. So I'm going to hang up my hat as the towns get there. And we'll leave it to other residents, the current and future city councils, to ensure that the will of the people is the basis of what the city does. I strongly suggest that you and any residents remain skeptical, vigilant, and closely examine the contents of the comprehensive plan as well as the revised zoning code when they're presented for your approval. I am going to spend my remaining years on this planet, on this earth, focusing on what really matters, which is my family and more personal pursuits. I work on vintage motorcycles. And to quote one of the most succinct comments from the survey, "We have a great community. Don't screw it up." So thank you for your time. Good luck. Better evening. Salute.
Norm, we are so sorry, honey. If there's anything we can do.
It's personal. Thank you for your support.
Yeah, well, I'd like to thank you. Before you walk out, hang on. I'd like to thank you for a lot of dedication and immense amount of time on that survey.
Not just the survey. You have been someone we can depend upon.
I've been proud to serve. Okay. Good luck. Take care.
Are there any other comments?
Yes, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I've been working with Mr. Powell on your Touch the Truck event coming up.
Yes.
I'm with Boy Scout troop 118. We can be right behind you at the New Franklin Global Church.
I need your name and address.
Eric Goodwin. 6789 Hampshire.
Thank you.
The church has been nice enough to let, start up our breakfast buffet again, which we had to suspend when COVID hit. And we're going to do, start this up and do it in conjunction with the Touch the Truck event. It's going to be our full menu again, like we got last time, our pancake, potatoes, biscuits, gravy, a whole nine yards. We will have flyers out very soon and also pre-sell tickets should be available about a week and a half. So we're, we're anxious to get this started again. All the proceeds go to the scouts themselves, right into their accounts, not into troop. And so all those scouts who work that benefit from it. And as a side note, also our annual rummage sale will be coming up August 19th. We have a huge amount of items this year, including a lot of furniture, knacks, kitchen items and whatnot. So please stop by and donate some money and buy the junk that we have pitching lately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do for the community.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Can you tell us those dates again? August 19th is going to be your rummage sale.
That's correct.
And?
And the Touch the Truck will be September 2nd.
15th.
Real quick, the rummage sale, what's the times for the rummage sale?
We usually kick that off at 8:00 in the morning at our council meeting.
And your breakfast is 8 to?
I'm going over to our meeting now. We're going to iron that out. It should start between 7:30 and 8:00 in the morning at our council meeting.
And the Touch the Truck is going to be from 9 to noon?
9 to noon for the Touch the Truck.
That's all.
And I'm assuming that action means we can touch the truck.
Action, yeah, now we're also going to work with the?
So touching the employees, we can touch the?
Yeah, that's the exact, is that?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make it clear for everybody else.
There's a one up here who can say that.
Yeah, our buffet is all you need.
Under second. Sounds good.
Thank you.
What was the date?
September 2nd for the Touch the Truck and?
August 19th.
August 19th for the?
The rummage sale. Now I'm assuming that's going to be over at the church.
Yes.
You did not say, but I'm assuming it's going to be at the church.
So the Touch the Truck is here. That's a city event. And the scout breakfast is a scout event over at the church.
One way or another.
Two separate events happen at the same rough time, or starts at 9 here, starts at 8. So it's pretty nice.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to do our first reading. Can we read resolution number 23R-62?
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2023 Annual Operating Appropriation Budget and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution 23R-62.
Second. You have a first and a second coming? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R-62.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Can we read resolution number 23R-63?
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution 23R-63.
Second. You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R-63.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Resolution number 23R-64.
A resolution accepting the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Safety Intervention Grant, approving the purchase of a Vermont portable traffic signal system set and declaring an emergency.
Need to discuss this during our streets and drainage committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second. You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 23-R-64.
Second.
We have a first and a second coming? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Resolution number 23R-65.
A resolution authorizing an addendum to New Franklin's agreement with Insight Advisory Group LLC serving as planning consultant for New Franklin and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Public Utilities Committee and moved to waive the three.
Second. You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
I made a motion to pass resolution 23R-65.
Second.
You have a first and a second? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number 23R-66.
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin's participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Again, this was, we discussed this kind of as of the last, a couple of resolutions ago. And streets and drains, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings on 23-R-66.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, make a motion to adopt resolution 23-R-66.
Second.
All right.
You have a first and a second.
Yeah, be quick.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Resolution number 23R-67.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application for the City of New Franklin to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission Emergency Funds Program and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Public Utilities Committee. Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 23R-67.
Second.
You have a first and a second coming? Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number 23R-68.
A resolution authorizing a collaboration of policing services between the City of New Franklin and Springfield Township and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Community Development Committee and we're going to ask for time on this resolution.
Time to question, so time to be granted.
Thank you.
Resolution number 23R-69.
A resolution authorizing additional payments to Cornerstone Brushing LLC and Zider Trucking for the Tudor House Seawall Project and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution 23R-69.
Second.
You have a first and a second? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to adopt resolution 23R-69.
Second.
You have a first and a second? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Since we have no second or third readings and no pending legislation, now comes our favorite part, the mayor's report.
They say that, Mark, but I don't know if they mean that.
I do mean it, Norm. I say it enough.
I know, it's very kind of you.
And we're just in service now, you have to sincere.
All right, well, let's see. We have another auction item. And as we mentioned before, our resolution 22R-44, which was previously passed, permits us to sell items at auction. Apologize for that. And this auction item from the Service Department, 1990 260C Ford tractor, 63 horsepower, mower needs a complete rebuild, unit needs to be sold. We'll be asking for a minimum bid of $3,000. We think the value is somewhere around $6,000. This would be done at Skipco. So I would ask for a motion to approve the auction of the 1990 260C Ford tractor.
So do you need a second on that and a motion? Okay, we have a first and a second coming? Okay, I'm sorry. Who did what? Who did what? Just writing it right down. The mayor asked for a motion for us to, to sell a tractor worth 6,000 for 3,000.
Yeah, she wasn't, did you make the motion during the? It's been a long time since this was filed.
Second. I'm sitting here, guys. Thank you. Do you need roll call? We do need a roll call. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-seven.
It must be a man thing, June, because I do the same thing in my life all the time.
She does it to me too, this is the time I get to talk.
And you'd think I would know better by this time. We're slow learners.
I think one's better, slower.
True enough. She's the only one that can take.
But you know, everyone, the woman out there, kind of agrees with you. And that's the reason we love all of you. You're just a village.
In the, I wanted to, I had noticed today, literally today, we had a request for federal appropriations for what we're referring to as phase four of the sewer, Austin Avenue ninety-three, which is estimated cost of about three million dollars. We had submitted application to Representative Sykes and Senator Brown for two point four million. Both of them included our application in their presentations or submissions to the House Appropriations Committee. The good news is the House Appropriations Committee has looked favorably, but not for the entire two point four that we were hoping for, just under a million dollars, about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, it still has to be included finally in the budget, but it's good to know the number and we're, you know, we're chasing the balances, et cetera, et cetera. So that's basically close to a million dollars that will be coming into the city. We expect the trajectory will be that they would approve that as part of the budget when they finally do approve the budget. So I want to give you a heads up on that one. Met with sanitary sewers this week and also we had some dialogue with some representatives from the OPWC relative to the request for funding for the sewer. The, I didn't bring all the numbers out. Brian probably hasn't memorized by now, but no, the first phase, we're referring to it in four phases and the first phase is the pump station, which is ten and a half million dollars. And the second phase is to extend it on ninety-three down to Grace Church. The third phase is the conversion of the package plant, Zellway, to a pump station. And the fourth phase then would be to extend sewer and water up to the visitor's center where it's built. So this, it's going to take time and we know there's years involved in this and we're pursuing that process. We're, as we mentioned before, OPWC only has eleven million dollars for all of district data and everybody's got their hand out. You know, and it occurred to me to remember, and I hear it by myself, I say, what about us, what about us? But there's, there's thirty-one municipalities, villages, townships in Summit County chasing money. And then there's eighty-eight counties, you know, in the state. So you've got about twenty-four hundred of us all out there chasing the same, same golden goose. But, so it's, it's a tough sell. From OPWC, we certainly aren't going to get two or three or four million dollars. We're going to try to get a million dollars from them. And I'm still optimistic and I'm still sure that things will happen and we'll get through that first phase. We're going to try to package it with the second phase. We've got a meeting down in Columbus with their Ohio Department of Development on August twenty-second and Mr. Benet from Sanitary Sewers will be with us on that, the visit and really fruitful conversation with the OPWC guys in terms of some other buckets to go into, to get that funding. So just, I'm trying to really, this is primarily informational, give you and I keep you posted on how that process is going and we'll continue to do that. Electric aggregation, we had some conversation about that the last time. A lot of people got surprised with electric bills, it's tricky stuff. The, I had posted something back in April and I'm going to post something again. The, we are part of the Summit County aggregation. That was a valid issue back in, in two thousand and two and the residents decided, approved separately to be involved in the Summit County aggregation for electric and then also for gas. And as part of that, that consortium, there's a, internally Summit County decides who the, who the aggregate key is going to be. The, currently, we are still part of that Summit County aggregation program and the advice from the broker who monitors that program is to switch to energy hardware. So, and I think a lot of people have done that, I'm repeating myself, I'm just saying, you know, for who's ever listening, I'm going to put it on the website again tomorrow. The Ohio Edison rate starting in June was twelve, twelve point three ninety cents per kilowatt hour and the energy hardware was four point six seven cents. And I know some people just got fooled, you didn't, you either opt in and opt out, you just, you thought you were on one and it turned out you got this guy had built. So I don't think we've gotten any calls in the city on this.
Um, not in the last week or so, but, but we have had.
Yeah. So we'll post that again, I want to let you know I followed up on that and, and I'm also doing a little bit further follow-up. We had, I got an email from a resident who wanted to know, how come we're not in, no PEC for electric? I don't know, well, we don't get to make that choice, but what I also don't know is how long we're in the Summit County aggregation, I'm going to find that out. We're trying to track down that, that was a valid issue, that, you know, whether we have to withdraw. I'm not saying we want to, but we'll continue to look at that and try to put our residents in the best position we can for, for their utilities. All right, the property taxes, we've written about this on the website and I'll do it again. And another, a press release came out from the fiscal office. The twenty-twenty-three triennial update appraisal has concluded. New property value notices will be mailed beginning yesterday. And so if, when you get that, if it is, if you do not agree with the numbers, you can request a meeting with the fiscal office. And I'll put that on again. It's, you can make the appointments by visiting their website. And you select twenty-twenty-three reappraisal meeting. Some of these meetings will be online, they are at a, there's a variety of venues that they're going to be at, but you've got to have an appointment for, for that venue, it's not a lockup. And you go to their website, it's almost senseless for me to say it, but I'm going to anyway. Fiscaloffice.summitoh.net. And if you just Google Summit County Fiscal Office, you'll get it there.
I would probably add that they're Summit County, Colorado.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I put up all the time, yeah. Yeah, so make sure you put Ohio in there too. And follow the prompts and if you want to request that. And we encourage you to do that and I understand that a fair number of reductions, you know, were made the last time around here, when people came and stated what their position was. All right, the parks meeting, the pavilion is like almost done, it's almost done. And as soon as it's done, we'll have a dedication up there. So I certainly, I expect it'll happen before the month's out, but try to get it done even before school starts, it doesn't matter, but we'll do it, I think like the tennis courts and set it up for four, four-thirty, five o'clock when people can be there. The parks committee is still hard at work. We had a representative from a local playground equipment company come and meet with us at the last meeting and I think the, the tender from that meeting was, we want to do something at Grill. They want swings, there is some playground equipment up there already. There's a recently installed Gaga pit, which we'll be honoring the scout who did that as his project very soon. But maybe something, at least a, a good set of swings up there, maybe. So the parks committee is going to meet at Grill Park. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August fifteenth. That's our normal meeting at six-thirty, it's going to be up at Grill Park. So anybody who wants to attend, come on up. And I usually put a call in to some local residents and see if they want to come out there as well. And the primary purpose to eyeball the place and see what we want to put where, that'll be probably the first project kicked, going into next year. We're also going to look at a more modest pavilion, even though we haven't yet, Sisler. They got the two ballfields up there and they'd like to get out of the sun and I think we can put up something that's really, that's not very big, but it would serve the purposes, so we'll have that discussion as well.
And Grill Park is in Ward Four?
Yeah, yeah, it's Ward Four. Yeah, you're doing good work there, man. All right. Okay. Let me see, barbecue, our barbecue fundraiser is next Thursday, August tenth, out at the Tudor House. And please come, it's a sixty dollar ticket, it's food and beverages and a couple drink tickets and music and a whole lot of fun. And it funds everything that we, all of our activities out there at the Tudor House. So information's on our website, just visit us at newfrankland.org. That is followed very closely by Saturday, August twelfth, the Dragon Boat and we'll be out there doing our thing on behalf of New Franklin, but great event. Come out if you can and there's plenty of ways to support, it's a breast cancer survivor event and we really encourage you to come out and support that. And the last thing, we talked about parking lot paving and we're still talking about that. And we wanted to put in the, the pipes, the, our connecting, our pipes that will connect to the lateral.
No.
The lateral.
The lateral connects to the main.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, the pipes that are going to have to go in to hook and to connect to the sewer line. The intention was to get that in before we do the paving. Brian has, like so many things, been right on top of this and, and sent the plans down, sanitary sewer has to approve those. Initially, they came back and said, and this is going to be somewhere around forty thousand dollars by the time we buy the materials and we're going to need to put this in. We talked about it before. When I talked to Summit County, they said, well, you know, you've got to be careful because just because the plans are done for the sewer line, things could change and you might put that somewhere that, you know, it's, it's not going to, you may have, it may not be exactly conform with, if there's a change in plans. We've been talking about that in detail the last couple of days and the feeling is that we are safe with what we intend to do, that whatever we put in will be sufficient to connect to whatever they put in. We would do it to the tune of about forty thousand dollars and then pave. Worst case scenario, two years from now, the sewer line's coming down and it has to be somewhere else. I've pestered him to death with every scenario that I can think of, how that possibly could happen. And Brian doesn't think that could happen, okay? And, and so we're inclined to go that way. If that were to happen, if we don't put the stuff in now, the stuff, the pipes, if we don't do it now, then we're going to do it in two years. That forty thousand will probably be sixty thousand. And then we're going to have to be paved. So, but that could happen. You know, if we wait, you know, yeah, so I'm throwing it out there to council. I, I know, you know, the feeling at, at our end of it, at least my end of it, but anyone more share any thoughts on that?
Well, I, I think this is some, some good foresight and this is what we need to do to look at saving money essentially down the road. We don't want to pave a parking lot and then tear it back up a few years down the road. The sanitary line is already out there on Vanderhoff, from Vanderhoff heading south. I mean, it's the same concept, we're putting a pipe in the ground, we're definitely going to dance for future use. I mean, I, I don't see a losing scenario on this because it's still going to go up Manchester Road, whether it's going to drop over the road or it's going to be, depending on either side of the road, just won't be able to connect to it. Yeah, and you know, you're running the line out there. Right. We're going to. You have to make little adjustments once it's out there, that's, I don't think that's an issue. Yeah, I think, I would support that. I would too.
All right, I appreciate that.
I learned about emergency.
That was a consensus that we approved as well, but I wanted to keep you guys up to speed and get your input because you've got experience in that side.
Paul, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Who warned you that things might change?
Oh, when I was at, I was at the meeting with sanitary sewer, talking about, you know, and, because we made application and we sent the plans down there and they have to approve the plans for, for, you know, what we're going to install here. And it really wasn't from the standpoint of, don't, you know, don't you dare do this, it really, I, I think there were, you know, good intention, say, hey, we just got to tell you, you know, sometimes plans change. You know, those are the plans right now, but it could change. But even in that conversation and subsequent conversation, because I've pressed it, to the point where Brian's sick of me talking about it, that, you know, from, they couldn't articulate any specific set of circumstances that would result in what we put in here not being effective.
So that's just them covering themselves just in case there's any kind of little change. As long as you just get to near the right of way. Yeah. Okay.
All right, good. That's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. Any other things for the conference today?
We do.
Yay!
Yeah, we don't have the chairman and unfortunately we lost Mark.
We lost Mark.
We do have Barry Shakers here, he's on the committee. I wanted to update, we got an email the other day, on Monday, from Lauren saying she wants to give us a quick update that the draft comp plan has been finalized and then getting reviewed by the Bowling Green Office. Once it gets finalized, it'll come out to steering committee and then, you know, the steering committee will have to, have to go through and approve it and all that jazz. So we seem to be getting close to the end and I think, I think we've got a good product coming out, we haven't seen it. We've seen some concepts, but, you know, we're looking forward to getting, Barry, did you want to say anything on it?
Just amen, we're looking forward to it.
So, yeah, thank you, thank you for everybody's help in that and all the community members that came and attended and they participated and turned their surveys in and all that.
They really did have to turn it.
We had great.
Every time.
Yeah, and, and, and that, that survey was commended by Lauren and her team to get the high level of results that we got, it was, it was a good, it was a good problem.
Thank you, Jim. Susan?
I just have a couple things, I just kind of want to add on to what the mayor said about the property taxes and the reassessments. If, let me make it just a little bit easier, if you just put in Summit County, Ohio, the Summit County website will come up, scroll down past Ivy Shapiro, and you'll see some gray blocks and one of them says fiscal and you click into that and then that will give you all the things under Kristin Scalise and, and it'll have where you can click in for the, if you want to go to the ones here. And so that, I think it might be a little bit easier than trying to type in all that, so, because that's.
Sounds good. We can go over it one more time, just so people know.
Sure, just put, just put in Summit County, Ohio. It should direct you, you know, to the Summit County website, click into that. The first thing at the top is, is there's a video of Ivy Shapiro, scroll down past that and there's some like gray boxes of the different departments, like the courts and all that. One says fiscal, just click on, excuse me, click on it and it will take you right to Kristin Scalise and all the different things, parcel numbers and all that kind of stuff. And you just look and it has a line for getting one of the, you know, signing up for the queue.
Thank you.
It might be a little bit easier doing it that way. Secondly, I wanted to thank all the members of council because the auditor said you guys all turned in your, your fraud information that they hadn't had, so thank you very much for being diligent about that, because she did make a point to tell me that you guys had all done that. As you know, we're still working on the audit, they were in-house yesterday and we were stuffing and fetching for them and we're still doing that over the internet, but they're hopefully going to wind up within the next month or so, so, but it's, keeping this happening, gathering papers and sending them to it, besides the regular stuff that we do every month. So that's about all that's going on in our department right now.
Susan, thank you, and thank you for reminding us to get that turned in. We appreciate that, even if we didn't show. Any old business?
I guess this would be old, even though it's kind of new, but still.
In between middle?
Yeah, well, we go. I, I just, I just want to say, I, I think I speak for all of council and the administration. I am just horribly sad for Mark's situation and, and what his family is going through. It's unimaginable what, what they're dealing with and I just, I just feel so bad. Mark, Mark has been, you know, has mentioned part of the comprehensive plan committee, volunteered for that, but even before that, Mark, Mark has been coming to meetings as a citizen. He, he does his research, he holds us accountable. He, he calls us out if, if, if we're doing something that he doesn't understand or doesn't agree with. He, he never had an issue with calling the mayor off and saying, hey, wait a minute, you know, and, and sometimes, honestly, sometimes a pain in the butt, right? But we need that, we need people like that, we need people to come to our meetings and, and, and hold us accountable and, and, and look at things differently than we might be looking at this. And that's something that Mark did. He was, like I said, he was here at every meeting, his wife was here at pretty much every meeting also and, and they were involved and, and I can't stress enough how much research Mark did, how much work Mark did into just being a citizen. And, and, you know, I appreciate that and I just, I, I'm, I just feel horrible what, what him and his family are dealing with and I wish them the best to get through, through this. But I, I want to thank Mark for, for his commitment to the city and everything that he's done for us.
I agree with you totally. I think we've all grown to love him because he really is, you can always count on him to be here and always, not only call you out, but tell you, he's done a very good job also.
Oh, he's never done it for me.
He's done a good job at this end, so that was the only reason for the rest of what he did.
I've got a little bit of old business, I'll probably like to second what you said and hopefully Mark's family gets through this successfully and quickly and we can see him come back and, and pick on us again.
We'd love it.
Couple things, the bridge on Main Street and the detour going up Nimasilla, so I've heard some comments, you know, our, our, Nimasilla Road, I live on Nimasilla, it's taken some abuse, that's for sure, there's a lot of traffic. I went through the Nimasilla Manchester Light yesterday at five o'clock and there were thirty cars lined up to get through that light. And I thought, am I an actor or what's going on here? So, yeah, that road's taken a hit. Any idea on timing on that bridge? It's, the contract that Kenmore has was to be, and I'll say nobody knew that the bridge was going to need to be closed. I'll leave it at that. We sure didn't know. The contract for, the contract had already been written and was to be completed by June of twenty-twenty-four. That's what the contract says. And so the effort now has been to get them to move that up to December of twenty-twenty-three. But the, yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
But the, that, to my knowledge, has not, and I haven't checked in the last day or two, there hasn't been, that, that hasn't happened yet and apparently would take some additional money. This is a Summit County engineer's job. It would take some additional money to get them to move it up. We're kind of hopeful they want to move it up because I've been advised that a lot of their Kenmore trucks use that road a lot and, and caused a lot of wear and tear in there, but they'd probably like to have it open soon. Brian knows a little more than I, what's our deal?
I said I would too.
Yeah. Now, there's a bridge on Christman Road that is, I don't know how close that is to completion. If that, if and when that is completed, then we have an alternate detour, which I think would take a lot of traffic off of Nimasilla. But, so that's as much as I know, I've talked to Mayor Newjebauer, the, and we've talked about a joint effort to, to press the engineer to assure us that December would be, you know, the farthest out. I'm told that there's an issue of, they have to manufacture the girders or whatever, but I'm also advised that, I think they did ninety, US ninety-five in about ten days, didn't they?
Yeah.
So, things can happen fast, of course, we're not the federal government, but Brian, anything you can add on that or is that about where we are?
I've been receiving the emails that they are forwarding all the plans and trying to get that passed sooner than what they're expecting, so I got a few today, so they are moving on. I queued today, so they are moving on it.
Yeah, I guess I, we don't know, but I wonder if we're going to have to push up work on Nimasilla. I mean, there's, there's a lot of heavy traffic coming down that road.
School's not helping all the construction.
Right, right.
Which that was coming up there anyway, but now, now I suppose they're, you know, some are coming all the way across Nimasilla and Santa Claus. The only other thing that I had, and I, I probably bring up pickleball more than I should, but my, my fiance's son is really active in pickleball, and finally he asked his mom and I to come and play with him the other night. So they kicked our butt, but the courts were packed, and I was the oldest person on the court.
Wow, that's beautiful.
It, it was really neat to see that many kids out there. They had music going, wasn't my kind of music, but it was a, it was a very spirited atmosphere. It's, it's really getting utilized, there's that straight number out there.
If I may, real quick, with the Nimasilla and South Main Street, personally, I'd like that the bridge is closed. I, I like the less traffic on Main Street, but, you know, I know that's only temporary. We had talked a couple of years ago about the repaving of Nimasilla. And I, as I recall, we held off specifically because of the school construction. And, and I think this, this adds to the reason of, you know, of waiting. So the bridge gets reopened and the school gets built, it'd be a good time to live on that road. You brought up that there's like thirty cars lined up at five o'clock in the evening. I wonder if that's something we need to look at with adjusting the traffic signals or having an officer there at certain times? I haven't experienced that, I haven't gone through that intersection that time of day or night. But if this, especially with school coming up.
Yeah, it could be worse.
If, if we need to look at some things temporarily to help with that traffic.
Yeah, I'm looking towards Brian. It's tricky, it's tricky stuff with those, with those traffic signals, one of the things that makes it tricky is we only own half the intersection. In Green, it's the other half.
Nimasilla and Manchester.
Oh, you're talking Nimasilla and Manchester?
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, it was backed up way past Hope Creek.
We talked about that.
And actually, when I came up to it, it was that, I'm never leaving at that time, so I don't have a clerk. But when I came up here.
Is it eastbound, wait, I mean, where's the traffic?
If it was westbound, that's what I had seen.
No, yeah.
Well, they're making a left turn, so they're the ones that are, that are, and, you know, I'm not thinking we need a left there or anything.
Roundabouts, roundabouts.
That's back up, may have lasted seven minutes, you know, just because we saw it doesn't mean that it lasted.
It doesn't last a long time.
Yeah. But you throw school on top of that.
Right, yeah, hopefully a different, a little different time, because then you got the ball fields up there, the kids coming out of.
You get a lot of people.
Eastbound, and nobody can make a left off. I, well, look, I'll, I'll talk to our, our traffic guys about that. Where my brain is going is, that power, money.
Yeah.
Can we put somebody there, let ours?
Make the new council guy go.
Who should pay for it?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll talk, I'll talk with, Brian Primer has a lot to do with it, Captain Primer has a lot to do with that, and I'll get with him and Brian, and we'll, we'll see. I'll tell you this, where you don't want to get caught is in, in Giant Eagle, Botler.
Oh, well, we're over there.
I made the mistake of trying to sneak in there around five-thirty yesterday. Coming up Botler and, 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 I, how those people deal with that every night, I have no idea. You're right there. Yeah, you know, so, okay. Israel's company.
Brainerd.
If some of those, if some of, and this is just from a woman's point of view of that, but I think some of the lanes are really narrow when you're doing that construction. Does anybody else agree? I'm always like, hey, you expect me to go through this? Do we have anything else in old, mid-old business? Do we have anything in new business?
I've got a few things. First one is, Gager received a bunch of good feedback about the paving up in the other road. So that's positive. Fire hydrants. We got a limited number of fire hydrants in town now, and they're all in Manchester School District. I had, had a conversation with the scouts about a service project, I wanted to kind of get everyone's idea on this, sort of thoughts. It's Manchester, red, black. Why don't we just paint the hydrants red and black, cast black, barrels red? That would be up to Aqua Ohio to approve that. We had talked with Chief Leslie, I don't see him having an issue with that, but that's something you guys are about to move forward with, I didn't work on that.
We had some conversation with them about those when they were first going in, do you remember that, Brian, at all?
But they're already red and black.
Are they red and black?
I thought they were yellow.
How afterfolded?
My only recollection was, thanks for asking, but, you know, we'll, you know, we'll do with the hydrants what we. Not in a rude way, but that may not be the answer, I'll check on that.
Okay.
Because they've been really cordial and helpful about everything, I don't mean to.
They usually allow, you know, let that up to the community if the hydrants run, just want to bring that up.
Yeah, no, I hear that.
So, yeah, just a thought.
No, we'll check on that.
Last, or one of the, the third thing I have here is, we don't have anything for new residents. And I was wondering if you could put something together, just like a welcome pack, if you will, the city information, maybe some local businesses kicking, some, maybe some crew, something like that, just to give people, and just welcome to the community.
Very good. You have the welcome wagon, huh? Anybody bring the welcome wagon?
I did.
Yeah, could be. Okay, that's a good thought.
And then the last one was, like you mentioned, we got a dragon boat race coming up. Are we full or do we need paddlers?
We are, we, we may have one opening for men.
We've got a couple future councilmen sitting here in the audience.
It would probably want to participate.
Greg smiled. We are planning on winning this.
I have to decline, my wife is in a row for the dragon team.
Okay.
So I cannot go and beat her. Nor could I get beat by her.
True enough.
Either way, we'll be back.
I'm not saying we're going to have to finish this next term, admission to the team.
But that was a young.
There you go. That was a tracking in, man.
Okay, here's your last one.
So if we need somebody, here's, here's somebody else.
Okay, all right.
And then that's all I have.
We just added, Joshua Kenny's going to be on the team.
Awesome. Good.
Yes, yes.
That's great.
But I don't mean to overstate it, we're in it too.
But you've only said it a few times already.
And that's not overstating for you, is it? Do we have anything else in new business, old business, nothing in between? I have a question, I'm not sure where it would fall, but I noticed that a lot of the areas, and someone called it to my attention, a lot of the areas where you have the high tension lines and things, they are not mowing or anything this year, like they used to do. And that's, I wouldn't say, I would say it's a nuisance if some of the area was, it's like down by fiddling or whatever.
I thought that was up in the property owner.
I think it's that whole area behind, and that's all we're about, they used.
You're talking about where their right of way is. Yeah, any idea on that, Brian?
Who would that be?
Have you heard that before?
Utility company, I mean, Edson, I assume, the power lines, they cut it, but a lot of times homeowners cut it just to keep up with it.
I think it's too large of a section for homeowners to do.
I'll check on that.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Do we have any public questions, any input?
Carrie? Just something minor, Carrie Croce, High School 38 Center. I understand you're, where you're going with red and black for the hydrants, but red is the first color in the spectrum to turn black in twilight in low light conditions, so that would make them completely black at night. And if I need that fire hydrant, or I want to avoid that fire hydrant, I want it as visible as possible.
A lot of communities have them red though, just, just saying.
Okay.
Hey, I want to say also about Mark, and it's, it's, I don't know any of the circumstances. And, and I'm not trying to be especially special about this at all, but I, I wanted to ask him also before I get out the door, I don't know if he's a perfect person. And, and I don't mean to project any belief that I might have on anybody else. But I will say, and I, and if you listen to Mark, I never took offense at, at anything he said. And I agree that that stuff usually makes us better. We work a little harder, and try to be a little more ready. There's a lot of things he said I didn't agree with, but that's the merit, and that's okay. I think it never, ever reached a point of, of being disagreeable, nor did he. So, and I really respect the enthusiasm and the effort, you know, and the caring that he brought to the room. And I just will say that, that I'm sure we'll all, if you are in prayer, the person will continue to keep Mark and his family in our prayers, as, as whatever he's dealing with is bad enough to make him believe what I think he loves. We thank him for everything he's done and want him to know that we'll continue to keep him and his family in our prayers. That's all.
Do we have any need tonight for an executive session?
We do that.
At this time, our next council meeting is going to be August 16th, we'll accept everybody that.